It is eight o'clock, time to go over our agenda for today's meeting. We'll be here at nine o'clock. I asked everyone to cut your cell phones off or put them on vibrator or something because it is prohibitive for them to have them on during the meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Commissioner Doherty's got the invitation. Commissioner Gurley's got the pledge. And we will have approval of the minutes. Is any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Crampler?
We've got two items. Under special presentations, we'll add Industry Appreciation Month proclamation. I believe Mark Pope will be here to read that.
He will not be here.
Okay. So that'll be under special presentation, item number three. Under the consent agenda, item number nine will be a resolution authorizing the Health Department's recruitment and retention incentive pay.
Where am I? Let me find it. Okay, go ahead.
That'll be item number nine. That is authorizing the Health Department's recruitment and retention incentive pay. Those that go with that. It under, we forward to special presentations. That's all the adjustments we had to do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We approved September 8th and September 21st minutes together. They have to be separate motions.
We can do, I guess, both at the same time, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And new business?
Special presentations. We have a motion to approve the 2021 Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation.
Okay, and I will read that.
Item number two is a motion to approve the 2021 Fire Prevention Month proclamation.
Mr. Gurley's going to read that.
Or Mr. Crane.
Is Bruce going to be here? Do we know?
That was my understanding, but if not...
Okay, well, he may be here then, okay. But we'll let him do it.
And then the number three is the Industry Appreciation Month proclamation that we just added.
Okay.
Under special presentations, that's it under that.
Okay. Finished business?
Item number one is the discussion of our existing and continuing sewer issues. Kendall will be here for that. We'll save that until the regular meeting, unless you want to discuss anything now with him. Number two is a motion to issue written authorization to Mosley Architects to proceed with the full design services for a new detention center on the property adjoining the Cary Winders Detention Facility and the appropriate budget amendment contingent upon the county's attorney approval. That will need a vote on. Any questions on that? Number three is a discussion of a possible construction delivery method for proposed detention center facility.
Okay.
And item number four is the discussion of county commissioners' legal ability to set days and times for office of the register of deeds. Item four.
Okay. Can we have a public hearing?
Yes, sir. A 9:15 public hearing for North Carolina Community Development Block Grant Program that we previously discussed for drainage issues and housing repair issues in the Rollingwood community. David Harris is here for that. If you have any questions now before the public hearing, you're free to ask.
Anyone have any questions?
Chip, is that the one that we discussed that the people come up here and were talking about the ditches and stuff in that area?
It was some of the, well, it was one of the people from the Rollingwood community that had came and talked in the public comment section. And it's one that Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Gurley has gone out and met with. We're able to apply for a Community Development Block Grant application for them. And we're in the process of doing that, and this is a public hearing that's required.
And Madam Clerk, when we get close to 9:15, remind me to skip down to that if we're not filled with the business before we...
After, after that public hearing, we'll need to adopt a resolution of the County of Wayne authorizing the filing of an application for the 2021 CDBG funding for neighborhood revitalization after, after, after that public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I might ask, once we apply for this, assuming that we do, when would we hear back in regards to our application?
First of next year.
First of next year. Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, item number one is the application for elderly or disabled And the applications for present use value. Those have all been reviewed, approved by staff. I think there's just two of them, and one of each in your packages. Item number three is your budget amendments. I'll turn that's over to Angie for finance.
So, budget number 897 from IT. This has already been budgeted for, but what we need to do is just move it to a capital item so it can be capitalized. That was a $48,000. It's updates to courtroom six. Number 99 is from the Health Department, and this is to anticipate additional funds for the vaccination program of $98,158. And it is being allocated out to the different line of items, salary and wages, drugs-related supplies, and medical supplies. Budget amendment 100 is from the Health Department. This is money that was already budgeted. It just needs to be realigned, and this is to purchase traffic cones at the vaccination and testing clinics, and that's for $10,000.
That's purchase what?
Traffic cones.
Those are some expensive traffics.
Well, I think we got the same, all of us have got the same thought on our minds.
I said it.
This is the kind of manager, at the pre-agenda work, we're going to look in to see if we had traffic cones available.
We do have traffic cones available, but they're not, they're not the tall cones, they're short cones. These are the taller ones with the fluorescent stripes on the top of them.
They're DOT approved.
More for DOT approved.
Thirty-six inch with the, with the two different types of...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, if it was DOT approved now, I understand why they're expensive.
And if they're Florida DOT approved, even...
Thank you, sir.
But they will, they, it says for the Health Department, and I understand that, but the traffic cones could be available if they were needed other than just for the Health Department.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. If that's more than just traffic cones, I would, I would hope.
Budget amendment 103 is for Gateway. This is to anticipate the reimbursement from them. They have tapped into our, our benefits with the telephones, so that's just anticipate their reimbursement for those costs. That's for $2,902. Budget amendment 107 is for the Health Department. This is funds that were already allocated or budgeted, but what they're doing is they're taking those funds out of the salary and wage line items, and they're moving those to temporary help expense line items, and this is to help recruit clinical and social And the next budget amendment is from facilities. This has to do with the HVAC, the generator. Apparently what happened there is when the bids were done, it came back higher than anticipated, it had increased. So the funds are being moved from the Capital Line into facilities to make that purchase.
This is the generator to jail?
That is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Number four would be a motion to adopt a resolution 2021-34, approve the sale of surplus property jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro, which is 400 and 402 Miller Avenue in Goldsboro. Andrew, discuss that.
Good morning. This is a property that we acquired in June 2019 via tax foreclosure, property tax foreclosure. We did have a previous offer on this, maybe about three or four months ago, but then they, they pulled it at the time. They didn't, they didn't want to proceed with it, and they actually reached back out to me probably about a month ago. You can see in the memo, the sales price, what they've offered is $6,000 for both lots. The combined tax value of each lot is $11,260. I can tell you both of them are vacant right now. There's nothing on there. They have paid the full deposit plus the advertising cost of the public notice that we're going to have to run. I reached out to the city. They were on board with this as well. They haven't had any, any offers on the property, and they did reach out to the adjoining property owners who are not interested in the property as well. So if, assuming that you all approve this today, we would advertise in the paper for 10 days, hold it open for any upset bids. If there were none, they would bring in the rest of the money, and as soon as they do that, then it would go to City Council for approval.
Where's that in regards? I mean, where's Miller Avenue at?
There's a map in there.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Let's see.
I want to see the map.
So, Miller Avenue and then South Alabama, right there on the corner, and then Orchard Street is right there as well.
Yeah. So it's on the corner of Miller and Alabama?
And my understanding is this isn't a nonprofit or anything like that. This is just a, a regular business who's interested in purchasing the property. So I say that only because it will go back on the tax rolls, and they'll start paying taxes on it again.
What is the property zoned for? Is it residential?
Residential, yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. The next item is a resolution to adopt, or a motion to approve the Wayne County 2022 Holiday Schedule, and you'll see that on page 50 of your, 51 of your packet. Twelve day, 12 days of 2022 holiday schedule. Okay, item number six is a motion to adopt a resolution 2021-32, a resolution adopting the 40th Amendment to the Position Classification and Pay Plan for Wayne County. Mr. Ginger, if you'd be lucky to speak on that?
This is the position for the library?
It's not, we're not adding a new position. We're simply reclassifying a position that's existing to make better use of the funds and staffing issues that Donna was having. So it's not a, we're not creating anything new. We're just reclassifying an existing position she already has. Any questions?
I do have one quick question for Donna. How many positions are you short right now?
We have seven people who are out of work for various reasons, but vacant positions. We have this position that we're asking to reclassify, and we have three substitute positions that are vacant.
Okay, thank you.
We have a new person who began work yesterday, so we're starting to talk about yesterday. And I have one full-time position, I'm in the circulation department. That opened up this week.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a motion to approve a Position Classification and Pay Plan study for the Department of Social Services and the appropriate budget amendment. This is due to understaffing vacant positions to get more competitive and to recruit more employees, fulfill these jobs. The D S, Board of Social Services unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners begin that full pay and class study, and this is just trying to get that accomplished. We would go out, contract with Susan Manning, who's done some of our other departments with this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, any, any, does Kim need to, or Ginger, who needs to address this? Or do we want to wait and do it in the regular meeting?
Well, this is under consent.
Under consent, okay. All right.
All right, so, good morning.
Good morning.
What I've provided to you guys, just snippets of what I am looking at and what I'm dealing with at the department. So the first item that you would look at would be our personnel report, and as you can see from the beginning of January, how our increase in numbers as far as vacancies has risen. We're currently at 42 vacancies overall in the agency. And down to the bottom, you'll see where this is going to be, or it is an issue, as we've had four people retire. And as you guys know, when people retire, that's that knowledge that's walking out. And as of December, I have five more people that's going to retire. So that's a lot of knowledge that's getting ready to walk out of DSS from our services department, from my economic services, from my economic services area. So that poses a, a high issue when it comes to the agency. When you flip onto the salary comparison piece, so what I've done, and I know we, only about two years ago, I looked at increase in our economic services salary because, or the, the entry salary, because Johnson County, I lost 17 economic services workers to Johnson County. So we had to become somewhat competitive. And I know we always talk about Johnson County right beside Wade County, but what I was able to do is kind of also look at Sampson County. And when you look at that salary comparison, Sampson County is actually coming in higher in a lot of, a lot of areas with their starting salary. One of the example, if you even look at our, that first page, the accounting clerk, they're walking them in at the $28,000, where we probably will walk someone in at 26. From our personnel technician, that second page, when you're looking at our income maintenance supervisor, they're starting their minimum salary, walking someone in. And I'm looking at Sampson because Sampson only has 100 and 52 employees compared to where we're at, 217. So our income maintenance supervisor two, where you will see that they're, they would initially bring somebody in at 42, and we're only bringing them in at 39. And as you move on to our social work area, our social worker twos, they would walk them in at 44, and we're bringing them in at 39, even down to our supervisors. Sampson County would walk a supervisor in at 59,000, and we're only able to bring them in at 52. So it's a stark difference when you look at such as Miller County compared to where we are, and with the retirements and the vacancies that I'm currently dealing with. And that last page, when it looks at salary compression, that's the other issue that I've been dealing with from since taking in, taking on this position. That last page, there are just a couple instances. So that first set of block is where I was able to promote an internal worker, IMC3, to a lead worker, and was only able to increase her salary by $200. That was only an eight cents increase on her check that she now had to take on this responsibility. So when I'm dealing with this compression issue, I couldn't bring someone in over the other workers who had been there for years. So that's why I was able to kind of show you guys, people who've been there for years, and somebody new coming in. Then that second section, when I look at bringing a supervisor in who is getting ready to take on an entire team, I'm only able to walk them in at $1,500 over the person that they're supervising. And then the other compression situation that we're dealing with is that last one down to the bottom, where I have supervisors or workers who have been there for years, and you can see the difference in the salary. Somebody that's been there many more years are being, they're being paid less. So it's just the concerns with being competitive, our salary compression, just a lot of issues that I'm looking at when it comes to the agency as a whole, why I'm presenting this to you guys, in looking at some kind of salary study for the agency. Any questions?
Excuse me, any questions for Ms. McGuire?
So, so at this point, you're proposing that we do a salary study?
And a compression, to actually look at the compression issues that we're having as well.
So, so have you found any firms that would do this for us?
We can contract with Susan Manning when you turn...
Ginger.
We can work with Susan Manning. We've used her for a couple of other studies we've done inside the county. She's very familiar with our processes and our policies, so it would be very seamless for her to come in and help us with this one also.
In the past, do you recall how much it costs to retain the services?
She, it's an hourly rate. It's $85 an hour, give or take, depending on how deep the study goes, but it's all based on an hourly rate, and she'll give us an estimate certainly before we even get started.
Well, I think it's definitely something that we definitely need to look into. When you look at an employee that's been there for several years, and then somebody can come in and they're making more, and/or the same amount as that individual, that doesn't make you feel good as an employee.
Okay, anyone else?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind you, I mean, it's, it's pretty dire straits there, 20%, almost a 20% vacancy rate in the positions, and there are 214 positions. There's a lot of vacancies there. And that salary study, we'll be looking at compression, and Ms. Manning has a lot of experience in that field, and I think she does it really well, and does a really good job.
Ms. McGuire, I'm sorry, I know you just sat down, but how's, how has it been thus far as with your, you being a supervisor, director, how's it been with all of these vacancies? Has it been a heavy toll to operate?
It is when you look at the vast amount of influx that we've received when it comes to COVID. When you look at our applications when it comes to FNS, food stamps have increased. We can't terminate certain Medicaid clients. And then when we have vacancies, especially in child welfare, you look at protecting the kids, making sure that, you know, a child doesn't go and unfortunately ever die when it comes to that situation. So, and I've spoken, when I've spoken to my board, the staff is amazing, because even though with the vacancies, they still push through and try to continue with the numbers, keeping up our, our numbers when it comes to what the state is actually looking at, regardless of the vacancies. So every day they come in and they're giving way over the 100% that I maximum to.
How, how are you controlling your overtime?
So, we don't, I mean, they, they have time off, but I don't necessarily pay overtime. We don't do the payment of overtime. I think they just kind of work through it. We, we try to be flexible with the staff, but like I said, they kind of get in there and do whatever they need to do to make sure that our kids are protected, people in the community are receiving their, whatever benefits and services.
They're basically all salary employees, okay.
Majority of them.
All right, well, certainly tell them that we appreciate it. I mean, that, that won't go very far, but, but we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number eight is a motion to approve a lease agreement with the Wayne County Board of Education for the new Fremont Elementary School. Ask Andrew to step up, he worked on this.
Good morning again. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we finalized a summary agreement with the school board on how exactly Fremont, the new Fremont Elementary School is going to be paid for. So the next step would be for the school board to deed that property over to the county, so that way during construction, we can recoup the savings for the sales tax. So my understanding is, I believe it was Thursday, I think it was Thursday, but sometime last week, the school board approved both the conveyance of the property over to the county and also the lease agreement. So the way that the lease agreement is structured at this point is we would, in effect, become the landlord, and we would lease that back to the, to the school board during the course of whatever debt that we take out. So we have to own it because, one, the sales tax issue, but two, also, we have to put that up for collateral when you go, when you all go out for a bond. You've already had that reimbursement resolution, so we can start on that, but we're going to become the owners of the property and start leasing that out during construction and then for the life of the loan. As soon as that loan is paid off and it's recouped, then we would deed that back over to the, to the school board. This is the same structure that we used for Meadow Lane when we went out for a bond in 2017. We, they executed the deed over to the county, and then we just leased it back to them for the life of the loan. And all that original paperwork was dropped off yesterday from the school board, so once that's done today, we can go ahead and record the deed, get that executed, and then move forward with the next steps on the project.
Any questions for Mr. Neal?
And I know there was some questions about the sales tax itself, so the $23 million that you all have agreed to with the school board, none of that includes sales tax. So the way that that's structured is basically the county fronts any sales tax, so we pay that to any contractors or any vendors or whoever, and then we apply ourselves to the Department of Revenue and get that money back. So the, the school board never sees a dime of that. We never touch their budget. It's a complete wash on the county side, so there's no confusion. The school board doesn't need to be concerned about any sales tax that they may have to front and not get recouped those costs, because we completely take care of that, and it's a wash on our end. So it's just a little bit easier for accounting and everything for us to handle it that way.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, and the add-on, item number nine was a resolution 2021-35, authorizing the Health Department recruitment and retention incentive pay. Ginger, would you like to step up and speak on this?
Dr. Wise, who had voted on September 8th to work toward a recruiting and retention incentive pay to help incentivize nurses in the Health Department. Dr. Wise has been very vocal about the turnover rate and a need in that area specifically for her nurses. So in working with the board, it was recommended that we begin incentive payments of $5,000 for specifically outlined nurses that are in this policy in front of you. Payments would start November 1, and they would be paid out on a monthly basis over a span of eight months. And we do have some clauses. You must maintain employment in a satisfactory rate at any time if her nurses follow below meeting standard service. meeting standard service, then they are no longer eligible for the incentive pay. This is for new hires and currently staff nurses in the Health Department. Dr. Weiss, you want me to add anything to that or Andrew?
No, so, just for a little bit of the statistics, so the department has been running about a twenty-five percent total vacancy for probably the last six years. Unfortunately now, we're probably about at thirty percent because largely because of this nurse shortage. There's a national shortage, a state shortage, and it impacts us locally. So we're down eleven out of twenty-six nurses for a forty-two percent vacancy rate. It's just very hard to compete with the healthcare systems and the other entities that pay more money and are all giving incentive bonuses. And I think that's what drove the board of Health to make a suggestion or recommendation that we come up with a plan with the county to encourage nurses to stay and to incentivize new nurses to come. So as you know, clinical service is ninety percent of the portfolio of the Health Department and without the nurses, there are no clinical services. So it's really vital to the health and continuity of the department as a whole. So thank you for your consideration.
And I'll add just a couple of little items. It is structured over the course of eight months, so it'd be paid in eight installments. That was mainly due to concerns that if we paid five thousand dollars upfront and then someone were to leave, we would have the burden of trying to recoup that. So the way it's structured now, pretty much the employee works one month and then they get one installment. So that's the most equitable way. And so that way, if they were to leave, it's prorated for the time that they have worked. So if you work three months, then you get three installments. It does not apply to anybody that's out on FMLA or military leave or anything like that, of course, when they would come back, they would be eligible for that. One thing that Dr. Weiss didn't mention, and I can't really speak to it, we probably need to explain the, how it's being funded. I believe that there's a.
Absolutely, that's the best part.
There's a revenue stream, I think, in the Health Department that probably needs to be discussed.
I was fixing to say, that's ingenious how you all have been able to come up with these funds, so please explain that.
Well, I'm Steve Moore, I'm the deputy director over at the Health Department. So with COVID, we've been able to bring in a fair amount of money, which has been difficult, but we've been able to bill for accurately and bring in a fair amount of money. And so at the beginning of the year, you know, we don't want our expenses to exceed our revenues. And so, you know, we can't spend, so say last fiscal year, we would not have been able to spend these dollars on this situation. But currently, because we are, these are in our fund balance, so these dollars have, are above what we had budgeted for them, they are in excess of the expenses. And so all the money that we have here is revenue in excess of expense. So none of it's coming from the county. It's all in our fund balance currently. Coming from our communicable disease and our vaccination funds. Any questions about that?
Do I have a question pertaining, how many, how many employees are we intending on giving incentives to nurses?
Right, so there are twenty-six nurses, fifteen of them are here and eleven are vacant. Forty-two percent vacancy rate. So that's a pretty high vacancy rate, obviously. And the average starting pay is like fifty-one thousand, five hundred-ish. So this would put a five thousand dollar incentive above that.
I have a question. How much is this really going to help? I have some friends, actually, my daughter's a nurse, and I know what nurses are getting paid right now and I know that they're leaving, going places, they're traveling nurses, there are all kinds of different things going on. And I just, you know, five thousand may seem like a lot of money, but when you're talking about a nurse, it's really not in what they're getting paid right now. And I just have to be realistic, you know what I mean? That, you know, I'm not against this at all, but I just want to ask because it's no need of coming back to the drawing board and, you know, a little while saying we're having this same problem. When we might could address it now and just be honest with this board and be, be, you know, just honest with ourselves about what's going on. Is this going to be enough money to keep nurses around and to bring any nurses in? I just don't think so. Just my personal opinion. And I would like to see if it's anything else that we could do. This is, this is a problem, it's going to be an ongoing problem for a while, you know? Just as social work director, we have to do something there as well. It's an ongoing problem. So let's try to figure out what we can do to address this problem now so we can hopefully retain some nurses, maybe get some new ones in, some that need some experience, whatever it may be, you know?
So I would certainly say the five thousand dollar little incentive is just an icing on the cake type thing. You know, it is not the be-all, end-all. You know, the fact that we have the eight-to-five jobs, thirteen paid holidays, weekends off generally unless there's some kind of disaster, you know, the pay fifty-one thousand, five hundred is not completely below market standard for that, even for hospitals. It's not there, but it's not too far off. So it's, so this is just kind of an extra little incentive that should bring in some nurses, enough nurses that we need. It's not going to be, it's not going to make us competitive with UNC Wayne necessarily. You know, they can, they can provide programs where they're, you know, for short periods of time, paying nurses a hundred dollars an hour. That's not possible for us.
I understand that, yes.
But when it comes to the whole package, it can be reasonable.
So how are we comparing to Johnston County, surrounding counties, as far as just that fifty-one base salary? How are we comparing to them? Because I know that we lose also to Johnston County and surrounding counties at times.
Right.
It is a little lower than other counties. But I think we have a good benefits package, as Steve said, and I think I presented before. We honestly have an outstanding camaraderie amongst this group and we just, we're celebrating last week their wonderfulness and they're really close. And I think we offer that in our county, but other counties don't have that cohesion. And so it's a balance between we're trying to incentivize them to stay with a monetary gain because everyone's giving that. We wish it could be more and we probably could afford a little bit more, but we were trying to balance the, the bonus with what the benefits they already get by being in the department across the board. The vested after five years, the excellent, you know, time off, the cohesion-ness and the camaraderie in the department. That's hard to find, like in the hospital, that sense of teamship and, you know, cohesion. And we offered that. So we're hoping that that balancing act works out.
Well, I mean, you're the expert.
We're trying, we're trying not to make it so much that, I don't know, we're just trying to balance the two.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, you know, if there's something we needed to address now that we could address is just to get a little more competitive across the board with just that base salary. But you know the department, you know the, you know, what's going on a lot better.
Well, ideally, we would, we would love to raise the base salary, but I think that sets up a situation because there are twenty-six of them and equity across the county as a whole. There's a lot of offices, like Kimberly just presented, that could probably stand the bump up. And so we felt like the incentive pay wouldn't affect the base salary and the longevity of that investment by the county, but would also incentivize them. Again, it's just a, a bit of a balancing act. But we're open to changes or suggestions, of course.
Dr. Weiss, you feel comfortable that the figures that you're presenting to us will ease to your shortage? I mean, you feel comfortable with the numbers that you sent us, that this will get the job done, maybe temporarily or for a while?
I do. So one example, I'm on the board of the Wish Centers at the school and they have nurses and they just gave themselves a bonus of six percent of their base salary, which is about four thousand dollars, right? And they go home at three o'clock, but we go home at five, so it's a little bit different. But we took a look at that, we took a look at the other incentive packages being offered, plus our benefits, and I think this will work.
Okay.
And I would be sad if I had to come back and tell you that it didn't, but we're pretty confident that this is the right measure.
Mr. Chair. So, but we are not, we're, as the county and the Health, but we are not mandating that the nurses be vaccinated where the other, like the UNC is. So, so that's an incentive as well. We should be able to get some of those nurses, you know.
Well, theoretically, we thought that would happen and they didn't apply, so I don't know. We thought, we thought that would happen, but that did not happen.
Well, this, with this five thousand.
I think what it's going to mostly do, it may incentivize some, especially the younger nurses to come, but more we, we got information last week and the week before that several more nurses were on the fence about staying. And those are the ones, like Kim said, that institutional knowledge, they're already trained up people and they were going to go for another job with more money. We got information about that last week. And we felt very imperative that they would probably stay with that five thousand dollars. And that's really important to us. I mean, not only recruit some people, we want the people to stay that we already have, that already know how to do the job well. It takes about a year to learn the job well.
I got a lot of friends that are nurses and like Commissioner Foster said, you know, the traveling nurse thing is a big issue now. All you got to be is fifty, fifty miles away from your residence. So basically, they can, they can work at Carter General.
Right.
And have a place at the beach. So I mean, you know, so it's going to be an ongoing issue.
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like us to revisit the plan.
Well, I mean, I mean, my point is that if you're comfortable with this figure right now, that certainly doesn't say that at some point in the future, not only your department but other departments, we're going to have to come back and address it in the future. But if you feel comfortable, my main concern is, do you feel comfortable with this figure for right now at the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Weiss, in regard to you coming on board and starting, has there been a pay, a pay study since you've been here?
I'm looking at Mr. Daughery. I don't think so. I think there was one several years ago. We are probably a little under market value and relative to the other counties, relative to other counties, I don't think it's as dramatic a difference versus other sectors of nursing. Because nursing is so imperative and the pandemic has really, it was always in a little bit of crisis and now it's just over the top because there just aren't enough of them. And a lot of them have left the profession for a variety of reasons, so.
Well, I'd like to see us, you know, while we're, you know, going to start the process with her department, that we start reviewing your department for a classification study.
I think that'd be helpful and we have, I'm sure a lot of departments could say the same thing. We have other positions that we have so, that's in Steve's old group, for instance, the interpreters, which are really valuable to my department because we have multiple language spoken and those kind of positions that come in at entry, and it's a revolving door. It is a revolving door. We, I mean, we might as well just not even, you know, every time we think we've got them filled, three more people leave and then we get them filled and it's just constant interviewing and constant revolving door on some of those positions. And maybe we need to think reclassification or raising the salaries or these kinds of efforts might be needed for that too. And that might help, the study.
Well, I think overall that this board is trying to definitely help your department with the new project as far as, you know, the new location that you're going to be.
That's going to be huge.
And that's going to help tremendously, but I think the pay classification study, we should try to definitely work on that, you know, and, and see what it comes, what comes out of it.
And we're, we're early in this budget year. I mean, you know, normally, you know, you talk salaries and all at budget time, but I mean, I know we are early into the budget, but, you know, if, if, if this, if you still feel comfortable with this figure, I mean, you know, I can't sit here and tell you what we can do at budget time. I mean, it's, it's a don't if you do and don't if you don't situation, something at budget time, but, but really to, to actual pay increases, we really need to address that at budget times. Is that not correct, Mr. Trump?
Yes, sir, but.
I mean, we, I mean, I'm not saying don't start looking at it now. Yeah, we need to prepare now for the next budget cycle. But, I mean, a resolution like this is a stopgap protection. We need to initiate now in order to try to retain what we have and possibly recruit some replacements. I don't think it's going to be a fix, a permanent fix. I think it's going to have to be looked at deeper. But it's going in the right direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to say the traffic cones, they're three-foot cones. And so we are doing a lot of drive-up testing and we're ramping up our testing as of today for the entire community and you can see them from your car window. And that's why we need two hundred three-foot cones to make the, the car corridors over at the off-site center. So I just wanted to explain that because Kendall did have a ton of cones, but they just were two-foot cones, so. And there are two hundred coming and they will be available to everybody, of course, and we'll probably store them with Kendall, so.
Okay. You say storage?
Pardon me?
You say you need to say.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I ask that the resolution have additional language to say with appropriate budget amendment?
That is in the motion. Is it in the motion? No, we'll put it in there. Put it in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got it?
Yep.
Right, there we go. All righty, let's see here, going on to, that was the last item under consent. We have new business, new business now is a, a motion to approve a one-year lease of the property located at thirteen-twenty West Grantham Street, Goldsboro, for COVID-nineteen vaccination site and the appropriate budget amendment approved as well. With the sale of the Bussman building, you know, we're having to relocate and they have selected a site on Grantham Street. So this budget amendment will allow us to lease that for one year and it'll be paid for with COVID dollars, we'll be coming out of county's fund balance, so need to move forward on that. And so that's our item under the new business. Any questions on that? Then we will have public comments, be limited to three minutes. County managers' report, board of commissioners committee reports, closed session, do we need closed session, Mr. Parker?
No, don't think so.
Not, not a, is of right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we will adjourn. Okay, we will be back at nine o'clock or?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If you would like to address, while the sheriff is here, the Halloween issue, I did hear from the city and their plan. Their plan is to observe it on Sunday, the thirty-first, and according to other clerks that she reached out to across the state, several of those were keeping it on Sunday, the thirty-first as well. So the sheriff needed to know that. But it's up to the commissioners as to whether or not you declare the same as far as the county goes, so.
Have you, have you had a conversation with the city on Halloween?
No, I called Carol yesterday to let her check on it.
I'm sorry.
I, I called Carol yesterday to check with the city with their clerk and they got back to me that said they were going to do it on Sunday as the actual date. We Googled nationally, it's going to be done on Friday, the twenty-ninth, but.
So Halloween's the thirty-first?
Halloween's the thirty-first.
What else are they going to screw with?
Well, I think overall for the kids, I don't think Sunday's a good day for the kids. You know, a lot of times the kids come downtown and the stores give them candy and things of that nature. You know, I don't think we should observe it on Sunday. Most people are going to church and.
I agree, but.
You know, I think that it should be observed either Friday or Saturday, in my opinion.
I agree.
Well, but, but the city's going to go with Sunday?
That's what. As far as I know, did they vote on that last night?
They did vote on it, sir. There were no, there were no objections to it, she said.
So I guess we'll just follow suit if that's what you would like for us to do and we just need to have extra people out?
I think it would be a waste of county money to have anybody out on Sunday. Most parents are not going to have their kids out on Sunday trick-or-treating. I think it'd be a waste of county dollars. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm not disagreeing, but then again, you know, whatever the city's going with, I mean.
Well, the city doesn't always do the right thing.
Well, the issue is we're going to, if we, if we change it, which I agree, I don't agree with it being on Sunday, but if we change it, then we've got double resources that we're going to have to, because we're going to have to pretty much, most of the time we had to back up the city on some law enforcement things, so.
time we had to back up the city on some law enforcement things, so. But, I mean, I'm not having it on Saturday.
Mr. Chairman, if it helps, I think the county and, and Mr. Parker can correct me on this if needed, but they've always simply backed what the city chose. Is that correct versus changing dates?
Generally, I think that is correct.
So, and, and that simply eliminates having two different dates, which would be a nightmare for all law enforcement, I think.
If you have it on two different dates, you're going to have some of the same kids out on two different, on the same, on two different nights.
It's the thirty-first, it's the thirty-first. I mean, just-
I mean, Halloween's the thirty-first. I mean, I don't agree, but it's going to interfere with Sunday, but I mean, the game change everything. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll be back at nine o'clock to conduct business with Wayne County Board of Commissioners in County Wayne.